Wow, I don't think it's ever been this quiet before a board meeting. This is great. Thank you so much for being here. We want to welcome all of you. It's great to see a full room. So it's going to be a great meeting and a lot of good things to talk about and to look forward to. So we want to call your attention to these students up here that are here visiting with us from Clearfield High School. We're so excited to have Mr. Luke Stanford and Ms. Madeline Anderson, and we're going to hear more from them later. But we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Madeline Anderson from Clearfield High School, and these guys are student body officers. So we'll start with that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn the time to our superintendent, Dr. Dan Lindford, to talk more about these students.
Okay, thank you. And this is this first meeting that we have, it's always interesting for me to introduce the officers because we really haven't been able to work together much. They've come to one of our meetings and that was, we fed them hamburgers, right? But I do have some insight because I went to Clearfield High School where these two young people serve. And I can tell you, one of the things that if you asked any high school principal in our district, one of the things that they admire is the culture and spirit of Clearfield High School. There's something special. I remember some of those rough years, because it's my alma mater, and when I go visit them, or maybe our football team's beating them, or our basketball team's beating them, to see their students outnumbering the other schools' fan base and screaming like they're winning even though they're losing really bad. Those were the old years. But that's an incredible thing that is hard to reproduce, and unfortunately, the adults in the building can do very little to affect that. We know that it's students. It's in the spaces where students live and where students lead that real culture has developed. And that school spirit at Clearfield High, it's just impressive, young people, and we appreciate having leaders like you that we know make the real difference for that. So, thank you, welcome. We're going to, we'll work together all year on various things. I use the Student Advisory Council. I use them, that sounds terrible, but I do. I get information out of them, and they help guide the way I think about things and the way I analyze, you know, my work as a superintendent, at least through that one lens. And we're always grateful to have strong student leaders who are willing to speak on behalf of students in our district and give us, you know, their best direction. So we'll look forward to a good year together.
Thank you, Superintendent. It is one of our favorite things to be able to, when school's back in session, to be able to have student board members come and be with us at our board meetings. They really spice things up, so I hope they are feeling free to comment and say what's on their mind and tell us about their schools, and we just really enjoy having them here. So, thank you for being here. Okay, we are really excited about the student performance. And Mr. Mitch Hall, Teaching and Learning Department over Fine Arts, he's going to introduce this group, and we're excited to hear from them.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us be here. It's my privilege to introduce Ayla Nielsen, Kayla Wilson, Moenna Spotted Elk, Brooklyn Agnello, Cambria Parent, and Allison White with their teacher Meredith Wright from the Davis High School Dance Company. The Davis High School Dance Company is a performing arts group which through hard work and rigorous learning provides incredible experiences for students. Students from this program regularly go on to receive college scholarships in dance and often pursue careers in professional dance or dance education. Please enjoy their performance of Beat Versus Melody.
Thank you so much. That was beautiful. What a great way to start our board meeting, a great way to start the year. You have so much talent. Thank you for sharing your talent with us. That was just truly beautiful. We appreciate those, and we want to introduce, have your parents stand up in a minute here, but grateful to have your principal, Lori Hawthorne, here. And, let's see, your coach's name? Let's see, I'm looking for Meredith Wright. There she is. Thank you so much. And a parent, Allison White. So, thank you for all the help that you've given these girls, and we want to take some photos. Can we have the parents stand up? I know it takes the parent support for girls to be able to do this. Do we have some parents here? Thank you. Thank you for supporting these students and what they're doing. We really love to see what talents they have. So, we're going to take some pictures. So if you want to come up here, and Noel will get your photo. So, thank you so much. We also have a plaque for you that Ms. Julie Powell will present. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Have a great year. Okay. It is the time in our meeting where we allow public comment, and I just want to read our public comment rules that we have. So at the start of each business meeting, which this is tonight, we encourage and welcome members of our community to come and give a public comment. We truly do love to hear from you. This is reserved for those who reside within Davis County or work in Davis School District. The sign up has been available out in the hall to you, and I have it right up here in front of me, and you'll be called up one by one to speak. And this is not an opportunity to air complaints or comments about individual student education issues, bidding, contracts, or issues related to employment to which other avenues of communication exist. Criticism or derogatory comments about district employees or board members will not be allowed, and each speaker will be given two minutes to give their comment, and this will be timed, and you'll be given notice when your time is up. So know that we as board members are listening to what you are saying and taking notes, but we do not respond directly, but we are listening and there will be follow-up to your comments. So, thank you so much for being here. We usually allot about 30 minutes for public comment, so I'm not quite positive we're going to get through all of them, but we will do our best. So, okay, we'll start with Velli Velci Savage? Ms. Savage? And you can repeat your first name. What is it? Velci, that is a C, okay.
...our meeting, so I'm feeling quite excellent right now. Individual who is anxious and excellent, doing great, even while anxious. So, thank you for that. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and public. My name is Velci Sagstum Savage, and I am a fifth and sixth grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary. I am proud Spanish speaker, and I stand here tonight representing not just myself, but the voices of students and the 30% of families who sound like me, voices that are too often left out of the conversation. These students, my students, deserve access to programs that affirm their identity and prepare them for academic and personal success. The district is initiating a study of the DLI program citing attrition and classroom imbalance. The real issue is not that, or that has become detrimental to the school. It has been due to a systematic barrier and past decisions over the past two or three years that had included policies and decisions that had denied enrollment into the immersion program to native, even to native Spanish speakers, thinking it was the best for all. This is no a failure of the program, it's a failure of support. Research on federal law include every Student Success Act, or ASSA, affirm the importance of equitable access to high-quality language programs. So dismantling the only DLI program at Title I school just sends the wrong message, that our kids at Title I's aren't worth the investment. Dual language is not just a program, it's a pathway to empowerment, opportunity, and dignity. So I plead, please, don't close the door, make it wide for parents and students, so they can have engagement.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Carol Lee Gee.
Thank you, President Gerard, board members, Superintendent Lindford, other district leaders, and everyone here tonight who worked so hard on behalf of the students of Davis District. My name is Carol Lee Gee. I have been a social studies teacher in Davis District for just about 30 years now. Currently, I am at Northridge High School where I teach US history, AP history, and pop culture. Over the years, there has been a shift in how social studies classes and teachers are viewed, and that's what I'd like to address briefly tonight. Sometimes there's a perception in the public that history teachers, and especially US history teachers, come to class with a political agenda, either to promote a one-sided celebration of America's greatness or to dwell only on its shortcomings. In my classroom, I want to assure you that neither of these is the case. My class is not a pep rally and it is not a gripe session. Instead, it is a place where my students examine the past with honesty, complexity, and context, and where they'll encounter both the successes and the struggles of our nation. My goal is not to tell students what to think, my goal is to teach them how to think. In class, we spend time analyzing primary sources, identifying perspective and point of view, and connecting history to current issues, so students can develop skills to weigh evidence, recognize bias, and develop their own informed opinions. These are the skills that they'll need as future voters, workers, and leaders in our diverse democracy. At the end of the day, I truly believe that studying US history is about preparing students to live in and contribute to America's future. When they leave my classroom, I want them to understand where we've been as a nation, but also their role in helping to shape where we're going. At the end of the day, I said that, we're off to a great start. Man, I'm nervous. And I would invite any of you to visit my classroom and see the good things happening at Northridge, the great students we have there. And again, thank you for all the work you do. This is a great district, and go Knights.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have Cindy Stabic? Starkey? Okay, thank you for the correction.
Yes, I am representing all of the parents in my neighborhood. Our bus route does not have a permanent driver. Other buses double back to pick up students 20 to 30 minutes late every day. The impact of that on our kids is to arrive to school 40 minutes late, roughly missing the first half of class every day. Walking's not a realistic option due to both the distance, two miles, and significant elevation changes. We rely on the bus, but we've learned from the transportation office, routes are prioritized by a bid process, not by student need. We also have safety concerns. On day one, my son was an hour late coming home with no communication. He does not have a phone, so I called the transportation office. I could not reach a person and had to leave a message that I was trying to find my missing son. I never received a call back from the office to inquire about my son or help locate him. In an email exchange with our principal, I learned he also spent two hours the first week of school with Bountiful PD, trying to locate another missing child who's dropped off at an unknown location. After continually escalating these issues, to the transportation department, the director mentioned he wasn't even aware of the incident. My questions for the board is, what will you do to ensure more equity so students on routes like ours aren't left behind every single day? And what safety protocols will you put in place so incidents like missing children are reported, responded to, and handled properly from the transportation office?
Thank you. Okay, Andrew Cronin? Oh, yeah, okay.
All right, so I'm part of the dual immersion at Lincoln Elementary. Just some things, I have a daughter there right now, and it bothers me a little bit that I've heard that they might be canceling the program, which is great for her, as she's mentioned, that it gets them further in life if they have a dual language. With that, some things that I've thought about that could be thought about is, could they grandfather it out, so it doesn't just completely cancel the program? My wife has mentioned that if the Spanish goes, we might have to send her to a different school to continue the Spanish that we're trying to make sure she learns. Another thing that I talked to, I am a teacher in the district, and I've talked to their teachers, and they said, well, if it is overcrowding, could they sign a paper and only be able to get out of the class if it's going to affect their learning? Because I understand that, you know, the district is learning first, but if they're just getting out because it's too hard and then it unevenes the classes, it makes it unfair for those who really do want to be in that program. So that's kind of what I've come to say, so.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, we have, and I appreciate that you loved what he said, but we're not going to be able to get through all the public comments, so if we could kind of cut down on the clapping, even though I know you agree with him, but I'm hoping that we can get through everybody. But we also have Tiffany Aoun? Aoun? Is there a Tiffany? Oh, okay, you're written down here, but you don't have to. Okay, okay, no problem. Okay, we have Holland Lowell?
Hi, my name is Holland Lowell, and I am in sixth grade Spanish immersion. I have been doing Spanish immersion since first grade. Some of my friends have siblings in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. I beg you to keep the Spanish immersion because we need them to open their minds to the possibility of a new language. Some of my friends are, can only speak Spanish, and since not only Spanish immersion can speak Spanish, but since there's half a day in Spanish and half a day in English, they can have some of it in their language and some of it in ours. Our language can teach them other dual language, it's like, because since we speak Spanish, then they can speak English. But if we take away Spanish immersion, then in just the English classes, there's not going to be a lot of Spanish speaking. Some of my friends', little siblings are so sad that if you take down Spanish immersion, Spanish immersion is the possibility to go to a different country and speak a new language. It is the, it's the happiness of knowing that you can speak two languages. I've been doing Spanish immersion since first grade, and some of my friends can help me translate, and me sometimes translate to some of the people in our class, because they don't understand what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Did a good job. Okay, and we have, yeah, yeah, you know, she deserves a clap, but, okay, good job. Okay, Walker Lowell?
Hi, I'm Walker Lowell, and I am a student in third grade, and some of my friends have siblings who are in first and second grade, and I hope that everybody will be able to keep Spanish immersion, because like, we can keep learning a new language, and it can really help in later real life when we're going to other countries to speak Spanish. We are so happy that we have Spanish immersion, and that we hope that we, you won't take down Spanish immersion. We are happy, but we are sad that you might take it down.
Thank you, Walker. You did a good job, too. Okay, David? Okay, Dad?
The Dad's here.
Dad's here.
I'm Dave Lowell, I'm a parent. I've had three children go through the Spanish immersion program at Lincoln. We moved in about 10 years ago, and when we moved into our neighborhood, over half of everybody said, "Don't send your kids to Lincoln." There were charter school options available, they said, "They don't get the resources they need." And so we looked at all of our options, we had the PALS program available, we had other charter schools, and the reason why we kept our students at Lincoln was, number one, because of all of the diversity that Lincoln has, and number two, because of the Spanish immersion program. That is the only reason we went to Lincoln at all. And we believe, I've taught languages at the university level, I've studied language acquisition, I know multiple languages. The capacity, the brain capacity, there's a lot of research to back this up, but the brain capacity of somebody who speaks two languages is much higher than simple other learning in school. So it increases brain capacity, and so if you look, the only data we have is the attrition rates, which is not great data to go on, since there's a lot of turnover in the school anyways. But really, it's test scores. Do test scores show an improvement for those involved in the dual language immersion program, or do they not? And based on all the research that I've seen, it should, but we don't have access to that data. So we strongly, strongly want to encourage you to vote to continue to keep that program at Lincoln. Being Title I is hard enough, we get resources cut all the time, and we need as many people as possible to stay that are within the boundaries and from outside to stay at Lincoln to keep it a strong school for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Okay, we have Sherri Evans.
Hi, my name is Sherri Evans. My daughter Nora is a second grader at Lincoln Elementary right now in the DLI program learning Spanish. My son is a junior at Northridge High School. He did the DLI program K through six at Lincoln, continued with it at North Layton Junior High, and is currently in a CE Spanish Bridge class at Northridge and Weber State. He was fluent in Spanish by the time he was in fifth or sixth grade. He has had an amazing experience in the program and had amazing teachers along the way. I truly believe, because he was in the program and it continually challenged him, that it helped him, just him personally, but it helped him not have the behavioral issues that he might have had if he wasn't challenged in school learning another language. Being fluent in Spanish has been such a great blessing in his life, it's helped him at the jobs he's worked, it's helped him be able to translate for other people. I want the same opportunity for my daughter. We are out of Lincoln's boundaries, but we don't take going to school there for granted. We will stay there as long as the DLI program is there. It's so important to our family that our kids have the opportunity to be raised bilingual. This is such an incredible opportunity. My husband is also fluent in Spanish, as many others in our extended family are, too. And our school boundaries are Creekside. The next closest DLI program is Sam Morgan French. We considered sending our son there, but we felt that Spanish was a more useful language for him to learn, and so we were really grateful when he got into the program at Lincoln. The teachers at Lincoln are amazing, we are so grateful for them. We love this program, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have April Matthews.
I just wouldn't feel right if I didn't say a few words here. I am a DLI teacher, third grade at Lincoln. I am a product of immersion. I had a wonderful secondary teacher that immersed us for an hour a day, and because of that, I had a desire to go learn more, and I went as an exchange student to Spain my junior year in high school. Spanish has changed my life. I know it has broadened my horizons in ways that can't happen any other way. There isn't a day goes by that I don't use Spanish in real life outside of work. It has opened doors, it has just exposed me to so many new things. We hosted two exchange students at our home last year, and when their parents came to visit, both sets of parents spoke perfect English, and it was so wonderful to have conversations with them and learn more about their cultures and stuff. And I don't think as Americans, many of us can say that we could go to a foreign country and do that. And Senor Turner at Walquist Junior High in Weber County School District started me on this journey, and I am so grateful to him for that. I was really disheartened as a mom to send my kids to school and put them through a couple of years of Spanish classes at what they learned. And I feel like we've taken such a step back from when I was in school, we won't say how many years ago, to where we are now. We should be moving forward in this interconnected world instead of backwards. And I do want to just take a second, I know I'm supposed to address you, but Lowell family, estoy tan orgullosa de vosotros por hablar aquí porque es muy difícil. They are amazing students, I've had a couple of them, and I just wish you could come and see my students that are just recently arrived, as they cling onto my leg every day and say, "Teacher, I just want to be here in Spanish with you, I love learning." And it's so tiring for them to be in a foreign language half the day, as many of our English-speaking students learn when they first join immersion. I think it gives them a safe place where they can continue to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Christopher West. Well, there's two Less.
I felt really weird having to back to class, that's when all the naughtiness goes on, so try to keep an eye on him.
I'll watch him for you.
Keep an eye on him, thank you, thanks, thank you so much. Sorry to bring rough things and not more jokes. I'm being asked, I'm here because I have rough things. I'm being asked to choose between my Catholic faith and my daughter's health and well-being. My ancestors arrived here in Utah in 1847. And in that same year, they built a school for boys and girls. It's amazing. They showed up with nothing and built a school. That same year, right? Like, amazing. In Utah, children... And they wanted to not only focus... They wanted to focus on the whole person. So they... In Utah, we've always taught kids their intellect and their spirit, right? And Utah has this wonderful program where, in the middle of the school day, you can walk across the parking lot and learn your faith. And that's amazing, unless you're Catholic. It's not as wonderful if you're Catholic because you can learn another faith, but not your own faith. And so if you're Catholic, you have to take other options. And the option that works for us is a private Catholic school, where during the school day, my daughter can learn her faith, like the other Utah students do. Now unfortunately, because it's a private school and I'm poor, there's a mismatch there. I wouldn't be able to afford to send her to the school without the Utah Fits All Scholarship. Thank God we got it, right? Thank God we got it. Anyway, this summer, my daughter's been running with the Vieuxmont High School team. She's currently at an event. They're going to run in their formal gear at the school. Beautiful. She was just told... Well, she hasn't been told. We might have to go home from this meeting and tell her she can't run with the team anymore. We were told that she either has the scholarship to her school or she can run. She cannot have both. So I am here today to bring that to your attention. You might not know that. So I have to go tell my 15-year-old daughter tonight, "Sorry, honey, you don't get to run with your friends anymore." Then she can choose, right? Do you want to learn your Catholic faith? Or do you want to run with your friends? She's going to choose her faith, of course. That's the kind of girl she is. But it's just a terrible thing that I have to say, "I'm sorry, honey, your father's too poor. You can't do both." So I would like you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Okay, Shannon McGuire?
Hello, my name is Shannon McGuire, and I'm the mother of an 11th grade homeschool student who is a wrestler and baseball player at Vieuxmont High School. Like Christopher's daughter, my son was awarded the Utah Fits All Scholarship this year. So we have the same issues. I know the school board decided that Davis School District would not be a Utah Fits All vendor. And I'm not here to ask you to change your mind on that. My son is not looking for academic classes. But we're being told that he's suddenly unwelcome to participate in his extracurricular activities because of where our homeschool funding is coming from. By the way, the Utah Fits All Scholarship is distributed according to income tiers. So this message we're getting almost sounds like Davis School District thinks lower-income athletes outside the public school system don't deserve sports. That's not a good look, and I know that's not what you mean. There has to be a way to work within the legal terms of the Utah Fits All funding. On behalf of the homeschooling and private school athletes all over Davis County, I'm asking that you amend the district athletic policies and connect these students to their high schools by not enrolling them fully, but somehow registering them without the WPU that makes them ineligible for the Utah Fits All Scholarship. And this brings us to another wrinkle that would need to be addressed with this is the team conditioning class. When Vieuxmont enrolls my son in this class, they do receive a certain amount of state funding. Again, this blurs the distinction between academics and extracurricular sports. We pay the fees for the extracurricular sports. And this academic class period is actually used to practice the extracurricular sports. Regardless of funding source, homeschool and private school students should not have to be enrolled academically in order to participate in extracurriculars. So to summarize, the Utah Fits All homeschool and private school athletes need a policy that allows them to be on school property for their sports practices without being attached to WPUs.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have April. And I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. You can tell us.
Nobody can read it.
That's okay. You can tell us.
I am April Gutzweiler, and I do live in the school district. My kids went to Davis. Went all through the district. We loved the school experience. But currently, I'm a bus driver for the school district as well. And as a parent, not a bus driver, I would be horrified to send my school, my kids, to school on the bus. We've had to employ a third-party bus company, which I don't think that the parents know about. These bus drivers are unvetted. I don't think that they've gone through and had to do the background checks that we've had to. The buses do not have GPS on them so that we can find them if they choose to drive off with our children. There are microphones and cameras on every single district bus so we know what every school-aged child and every driver is doing. We're putting our children at risk by not making sure that we can do justice to the people who are here every day, driving your kids to school. Or, we're not driving your kids to school, leaving them at the bus stop to miss first period every single day this year. So as a parent, I'm horrified that we had to rebid, that we are not getting these kids to school on time, and possibly not even safe anymore because we don't even know who's taking them to and from school. So I just hope that you guys will take into account that your service providers in the school district matter. We are not uneducated. We are not the bottom of the totem pole in this district. We are good people who get up every day, whether it's two degrees, whether it's icy, whether it's 113 degrees on the bus, which it is. You're welcome to come ride with us. We do this every day for these kids in the district. And we are failing them completely because we were rebidding and our contracts were taken away. And now we are paying other people who we don't know to drive the buses. And our bus drivers aren't even getting the hours. I think that's something that needs to be thought about.
Thank you, April. Okay, we have Jaylin Edwards.
Hi, I'm Jaylin Edwards. I also am a parent, but I am also a bus driver. Like April was saying, we had to... We had a mass rebid. We all had to rebid. I bid on a route. I was awarded that route. I signed a contract for that route. I've been taken off that route. And because, when it was all said and done, we had all these extra routes. Well, I got put on a special education route, which I didn't bid on. I have 10 children. I have a wheelchair. I have a safety vest. I have three non-communicative children. I have no assistant. I have no information... I had no information on these children. I just got thrown at it. And my route, in the meantime, is being split. And I hear on the radio that they're not even being picked up. It's just so frustrating. And I... They have us picking... The routes have us picking kids up in a wheelchair on the wrong side of the road, a safety vest on the wrong side of the road. So us as drivers, we have to just figure it out and try to get them on there safely. It has been very, very frustrating. And if I didn't care about kids, I would have... I don't need the job personally. But I do it because I love the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Okay, we have Shelley Hadlock.
I am also a bus driver. I'm with Jaylin. These kids mean everything to me. I've had kids that have gone to school in Davis School District and never have I once seen a problem like this. We're trying to do our best. It breaks my heart that that mother had to go through that. I would be absolutely horrified if my student was left on a bus for an hour. And so you guys do know, a lot of us bus drivers are left not knowing who's on our bus. Very much so that that child probably was on a bus that probably that child wasn't even supposed to be on. I've ran five schools today. I did two high schools, two junior highs, and a elementary. These kids, like we have said, are getting to school anywhere from a half an hour to an hour late, which is taking away from their education. We have several safety issues. We are being routed on the wrong side of the road. We have a new program that was implemented this year, and they got rid of last year's program. And it has caused tremendous problems and errors. I want you parents to know that us bus drivers, we do have your backs. We are there at the front lines, trying to work hard for you guys. But our system has failed us. So I just want to leave that with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Jones?
Good afternoon to everybody. I have been a bus driver and worked for Davis over 22 years. I love what I do. I care about the children. And this year has... This is the first year I have seen this kind of mess. I have no idea what happened. They blamed it on the computer. Another thing that is concerning us, especially me, I'm a single mother, and I need the hours for my insurance, my benefits. They split their routes, and that will take away our hours. My insurance premiums went higher. The district offered... Well, they negotiated a raise. But then we also have, as Mr. Lowell know, that it's something that we owe hours, so we had to pay back those hours. So it doesn't make sense to get a raise. And they get a raise, and then I had to pay back hours, and then my insurance went higher. So it's kind of silly to me. So I would love for you guys to look into that. And Mr. Lowell, with all your respect, I understand that you're over transportation. It will be nice to...
No.
For you to visit us once in a while.
Can you please address your comments to the board president?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
We've seen you a couple times, meetings, the whole thing. But there are actually two compounds. So I would love for you to comment, see how we're doing. The communication is awful. We tried to get kids' information on the radio. Their parents can't help us. We call on the phone. Nobody answers the phone.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have Barkley B.
Hello, board. I'm Barkley B. Singer. I'm also a bus driver. I applaud the parent for coming in because as a bus driver, it is painful for us to see this new system that has been implemented fail in such a manner that these kids are constantly being left behind. As a bus driver, we're given things last minute. We don't know where we're going. The paperwork is improper. We're trying to make do on the fly. We get to the schools. We're asked to put aside safety standards to try to get these kids home on time. And you're leaving 30, 40 kids at a time. It's putting undue hardship on the parents. In the mornings, you're driving around. You're seeing kids being left at bus stops for upwards of an hour. We've had multiple occasions this year where kids are getting home as late as 5:30 and even at 6:30 at night because a lot of the drivers just don't understand what they're doing. We're giving these things last minute. As a bus driver, it's very frustrating when we try to call in to try to give suggestions of what we can do to help, to be told that we can't do that, that they're just to do what we're asked and just to put our head down and drive, basically. It is frustrating just to pull up to a bus stop an hour late and see a parent standing there, petrified, like, "Where's my kid?" And it's very frustrating as a driver because we're trying to do the best we can. We're trying to do everything that we need to to help get these kids home on time, but we're failing. And there's nothing we can do. I'm Shelley. I've done six different schools and a field trip and a midday today. It gets taxing on you. It gets tiring. And when you don't know where you're going and you don't know what you're doing until the last second, and then you're trying to make things up on the fly. It's very... It hurts the kids, and it hurts their learning. And I just want to thank you guys for your time for allowing us to talk.
Thank you. Okay, we have Renee Johnson.
Hello. I'm here for that dual immersion concern. I have two children in dual immersion right now. I have a fourth grader and a second grader. And this is their future. I'm going to see my son's football game right now because this is important. This is... This is... I mean, we might leave the district if this happens. I want the best for my children. I want them to have more than I had. And they have this amazing opportunity right now to learn Spanish. They are doing more work than their peers. It's harder. Their day is harder, but they're doing it. And they want to do it. And so why would we take this away from them? If they, you know, if they want to be better and, you know, advance themselves, why should we strip this away? All this hard work that they've done, year after year, and just say, "Nope, we're done"? Like, I just... It's hard to tell my... It's hard to tell my children that their Spanish program might be taken away from them. So I really wish you would consider getting rid of it. I did read that the average student is in Spanish immersion for 2.5 years. So maybe we need to find out why. Why are they leaving the program? We almost left the program. When my son was in second grade, he struggled. He struggled, he struggled, he struggled. And I asked him. I said, "Do you want to be pulled in third grade? Do you want to do Spanish immersion?" And he said, "No." But we kept going because you don't give up. And you know what? His third-grade teacher said that he excelled. He was doing wonderful. So we're glad we didn't give up. And now he's in fourth grade. And we're excited for a new year. But we shouldn't take this away from our children. You know what? Please, please give this to our children. They want to do better. They want to be the best they can be. And please.
Thank you. Okay, I believe it's Sean Evans? Sean or Sherry? I can't tell if that's an I or an N. Okay. Paulina Uvay? Uvay?
Dear members of the school board, I want to share how deeply important the Spanish immersion program is to my son and to our family. For us, this program is so much more than just an educational choice. It is both an academic opportunity and a cultural lifeline. Academically, I'm sorry, research shows that bilingual students tend to score around 10% higher in math and reading and on average outperform their peers by 12 points on standardized tests. They also show stronger problem-solving skills, creativity, and confidence, all things that I see blossoming in my son every single day. Culturally, Spanish is a huge part of who we are as a family. This program gives my son the chance to connect with his roots, to communicate with loved ones, and to carry forward a language that holds our traditions and our history. It's not just words, it's belonging, identity, and pride. On top of that, he has made incredible friendships in this program. His classmates share this unique journey with him, and together they're building connections that are supportive, encouraging, and rooted in something truly special. What makes this hard is that I had planned to enroll my daughter in the program next year, and the thought that she might not have the same opportunity as her brother breaks my heart. I want her to experience the same joy, growth, friendships, and cultural connections that this program has given him. The benefits of bilingual education are lifelong. Studies show that bilingualism can delay the onset of dementia by four to five years, and in adulthood, multilingual people often earn 10 to 15% more and have greater opportunities. This is not just about the present, it is an investment in our children's futures. The Spanish immersion program is a gift, not just to my children, but to the entire district. It creates bilingual, culturally aware students who are prepared for an interconnected world. It reflects the diversity of our community and it gives families like mine hope that our children will grow up proud, capable, and connected. I respectfully ask that you protect and continue this program. Ending it would not only hurt families like mine, but it would take away something powerful that the district has.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have Dallas Harris.
I'm not Dallas Harris. I have my husband.
No.
He couldn't be here, so I'm saying his words. When my wife and I moved into our first home back in 2015 with our newborn daughter, one of the most exciting discoveries we made was that Lincoln Elementary had a longstanding Spanish immersion program. As a Spanish speaker myself, I was thrilled at the thought that our children would have the chance to grow up bilingual. Over the years, as our family has grown and our financial situation improved, we often talked about moving into our forever home. But every time that idea comes up, there's one factor that keeps us rooted where we are, Lincoln's Spanish immersion program. Our oldest daughter is now in fifth grade, and we have three younger children we hope will also graduate from this program. Throughout her school years, we occasionally considered transferring our daughter to a nearby charter school. Each time, the deciding factor has been the same. Nothing compares to the value of the Spanish immersion program at Lincoln. In conversations with neighbors who have lived here for many years, I've asked whether enrollment in the program has always struggled. The overwhelming answer has been no. So why no? While I have no, my own suspicions, I do know this, our school has recently gone through changes in administration. In my view, that makes this evaluation of this Spanish immersion program premature. I respectfully request that this evaluation be extended for at least two more years. That would give us the chance to see whether the current dip in numbers is simply the result of short-term changes rather than a reflection of the long-term strength and value of this program. For my family and for many others, Spanish immersion is not just a program. It's the reason, the reason we choose to stay here, invest here, and keep our children at Lincoln. I ask that you give it the time it deserves.
Thank you. Okay, Kathy will be our last speaker. It looks like Kathy West.
Thank you. I didn't think you'd get through the list.
We got through it. We're a little past time, but we're okay.
My name is Kathy. I'm here about sports. Utah State Code allows homeschool and private school students to join local school teams if their own school lacks sports. Davis County adds a barrier to this by requiring that students fully enroll in the public school even though they don't attend classes. And this creates serious consequences for families like mine. My 10th grade daughter received a scholarship to attend a private school. And because she's technically enrolled at Vumont for cross-country, she's considered a public school student, which disqualifies her from her scholarship. The district has told families in this situation to choose scholarship or sports. If my daughter chooses a scholarship, she loses her team, not due to athletic or academic performance, but a policy that misrepresents her enrollment status. If she chooses sports, all educational funding is removed from her, none from Vumont because she doesn't attend classes, and none from the scholarship because her technical enrollment disqualifies her. Your priority is the district. Why should you care what happens to some private school kid? First, I appeal to your care for the educational health of your district. Many families are facing this dilemma. If adjustments are not made, you lose students from your teams who are worth having there. Second, allowing students to participate in extracurriculars is not courtesy. It's guaranteed by Utah State Code. Enrollment may have worked to involve these kinds of students in the past, but now with Utah fits all, enrollment creates conflict that the law did not intend. Third, Utah fits all prioritizes awards, prioritizes its awards based on financial need. So this situation disproportionately affects lower-income families in your district, forcing them to choose between academic opportunity or athletics, something that many other districts in Utah do not do. I'm asking you to adjust the district's policy to accurately reflect the educational status of homeschool and private school students who participate in district sports. I'm so hopeful that we can find a solution that benefits everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we did have one person, and I don't know if it's Sean or Sherry Evans that didn't come up. No, but I, I see you right here. I see you right here. And did you, you didn't get to speak? Okay, you can come up. There's also Sherry Evans, but... Thank you. I think I just skipped you.
Thank you. It's okay. So my, my son Luke goes to Lincoln, and he's in the Spanish immersion program, and it's his second year. And he's a shy boy, and he didn't want to go to school. He wanted to be homeschooled. But I was like, when I found out about the program, I was like, we went to the assembly, and it was wonderful, and I felt that it was good for him. So he's been doing really well, and it's challenging him. And he's even speaking Spanish at home with his dad. His dad's learning it. And even when I picked him up today, he was like, hola, como estas? Then we were talking. And I think it's really helped him be confident and just amazing. And even at church, he gave his first talk in primary in Spanish and English, which I was really proud of him. So I think of the future for him to grow and even for like, in the future of having a job and speaking Spanish or a different country and just really helping him flourish and just do really well. And I would love for this program to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call for Sherry or Sean Evans. Okay, so that's what I did. I mixed you up, and I'm glad that we got you both in. Okay, thank you so much for all of you that came tonight and gave public comment, and we will be following up with you. So thank you so much. We really appreciate your feedback. Okay, we have some really important recognitions to do tonight. We have two incredible women that we would like to recognize tonight. And one of them is Ms. Suzie Jensen. And Suzie is not able to be here with us tonight, but we still want to honor her and recognize her long list of accomplishments. She's done a lot of good in Davis School District, so I wanted to just tell you about Suzie, even though she's not here. And Suzie began teaching in 1996 at Northridge High School. She was an administrative intern at Adelaide Elementary and Vumont High School. She was assistant principal at Vumont High School, principal at Clearfield High School, director of federal programs, and director of human resources. And so altogether, Ms. Suzie Jensen gave 29 years of service in Davis School District, and Suzie will be missed. And we are truly grateful for all she has done for students, families, and the employees of Davis School District. And since Suzie can't be here tonight, we will make sure that she gets a plaque and we have some flowers back here for her. So thank you, Suzie. Okay, and we also have a recognition and an honor for Ms. Jody Lunt. And I want to just tell you a little bit about Jody. And should we have her come up? Where's Jody? I know. Could you, could you come up? Or let's see, that's kind of embarrassing, but, because we have a lot of good things to say about you, but, but I want you to know who we're talking about. So we'll just, we'll just have Jody come up, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about Jody. Jody began teaching science in Ogden School District at Ogden High School. Is that right? Okay. And then she came to us, lucky us, came to Davis School District as a supervisor in the teaching and learning department. And she has been serving for how many years as director of the Davis Foundation?
About thirteen.
Thirteen years. Thirteen amazing years. So altogether, she has over 35 years of service. And it's with a happy heart that I, I want to let everyone know that, that Jody will be retiring October 1st. However, it's with a happy heart that I want to recognize her for all of her incredible contributions to the children of Davis School District and to our entire Davis County community. How do you even begin? How do I begin to describe Jody Lunt? It's impossible because I feel that nothing I say will be enough to thank her enough for the important work that she has done. Jody is one of a kind, amazing, creative, smart, talented, loving, and fun. And I'm going to leave the other adjectives for Emily to use because there are many. She, Jody is an-
Leave them to my kids.
Jody is an inspiring leader. Jody gets things done. And it's just impossible to list all of her accomplishments. And one thing that we have learned, it's impossible to say no to Jody. And I want to just, you know, I, I just want to say, I know that there are so many behind-the-scenes and behind closed doors acts of kindness, many of which we will never know about that Jody has done. I want to just say she has a deep love for children, and we are so grateful for what she has done for our children. I want to give some time to Superintendent Lindford.
And I appreciate, I was going to take a personal indulgence if you didn't anyway. And so I will, I'll be brief. And I, you know, when I hear 35 years, I just think, why does she look 10 years younger than I am, than everyone else I know? So just want to thank you, Jody. One of those things, and I've said it about Jody before, and I don't want it to sound tired, but there's this definition of the true meaning of life that I just love. And I use it with you so often because it's, it's more of a fitting of you than almost anyone I know in the world. And that is this idea, the true meaning of life is planting trees under whose shade you don't expect to sit. And that's what you do, and that's what you've done throughout your career. Just planted these trees that, that are not going to benefit you in any way, but will benefit children and children who can't plant them for themselves. So you are always the bringer of good news for our district, and all of your work is just special and it's extra, and it's, it's the little miracles that, it isn't part of our regular system, but we just hope someone does them and you do them. So thank you. It is, it's impossible to express to you how much you've meant to our district and more so to the children of our district. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm going to give some time to our board vice president, Emily Price, to say a few words, as she has been our board representative on the foundation board, working directly with Jody. And then we will give Jody an opportunity to say a few words if she would like to. And then, of course, we want to recognize her supportive family, and we have a couple gifts for you. Okay, Ms. Price?
Okay, so there's a lot of words that describe Jody, but the one word that really stood out to me is that Jody is inspirational. I met Jody in January of 2021. I was serving as a community, on the community council for Syracuse High School, and I was taking a tour of the Clearfield High Teen Center because Syracuse High was in the process, like, the beginning stages of, of their teen center. And I did the tour, and after the tour, I, I sat in my car, and I was just like overwhelmed. I was inspired. I was just like, oh, man, I've got to get involved. I didn't know what that would look like. Like, I honestly thought, well, maybe when the time comes, I'll apply to be the teen center coordinator at Syracuse High. Like, that's what was in my mind because that's kind of my background with my, my degree. But then fast forward a couple of months, and I had a friend who approached me about running for school board. And I really do think that my, my interaction with Jody, my tour of the Clearfield High School Teen Center is what planted the seed for me to move forward to be on, to run for school board because I had zero aspirations to be an elected official and, and do any of these things that I'm doing now. But, so I just want to say thank you for, for that inspiration. But as I, as I have been on the board for the last two and a half years, I've been able to serve on the Davis Education Foundation Board and have continued to be inspired by you. And I'm just so, so grateful for your example, for your influence for good. You truly love, you love hard, you work hard, and I know that your priority has always been the students of Davis School District. And I thank you for that. I thank you for the amazing things that you've been able to accomplish in the last 13 years as a, as a director. And it has been an honor and a privilege to be able to work with you, and most importantly, I am grateful to call you friend. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Jody, would you like to say a few words?
You certainly didn't make it easy to say goodbye. It has truly. And an honor to work for Davis School District. I do love the children in this school district. I love being the conduit to our incredible community who makes magic happen. We live in a great county, and our parents and our corporations and our community organizations deeply believe in the work that we do. And they believe that our children need opportunity with accountability, and they need access to all of these. And these last few years, these last 13, they're very few. In 1989, I never thought, as a field biologist who really loved a good day in the mud, that I would be standing here speaking about child advocacy rights and the needs that we had in education. But it has been a privilege. I am able to walk away from this, this career at this point in my life and say, wow, I had an amazing experience in an amazing organization. I say quite often, I love what I do, who I do it for, and who I do it with every day. This has been the most bittersweet decision, but at some point in time, they kind of kick you out. It's after, it's actually 37 years, but it's only 35 that they're giving me credit for because I took a couple of years and spent a little bit more time at home. But I want to thank you each as a board, the work that we have accomplished in this school district for children, for advocating for those who have less of a voice, for advocating for those who need just a little bit of assistance so that they too can thrive in the incredible academic institution that we've created. I thank you because it doesn't happen in a silo. It happens with our community. It happens with an incredible school board, with superintendency leadership, with an incredible staff. The work that's happened in the foundation has happened because of the people who you aren't seeing here tonight. And that's what gives me the faith that I can say, I can retire because you have an entire staff of people that are committed to the work of the children in this district. So thank you is such a small word. I wished I could make a new one up in the language that encompassed the gratitude, the grace, the humility that I have felt in giving my time to each of you. So thank you for the most marvelous years I've had. And no, I'm not going anywhere. Call me. Let me hope if there's other ways that I can be connected to this school district as I open the next chapter in my life. So thank you.
Thank you, Jody. We will miss you immensely. We will, we will miss you so much, but we wish you well in your future endeavors, and I know there will be lots of those. We want you to bring your family members that were able to come tonight and introduce them, and then we have a couple gifts and pictures.
Perfect. Well, my best friend, my partner in crime in everything I do, and the only reason I've been able to continually work and do what I do is my husband, Scott. I have my beautiful children here. I have my son, Max, my other son, Cade, my daughter, Abby, my other daughter and, daughter-in-law is unable to be here, and my daughter and son-in-law are unable to be here, but I got the best part of it because we had agreed to do Nana and Papa babysitting tonight. And they didn't know they got to come to a really great board meeting.
Yes!
My best part of my, that makes parenting and what you do, is my little Theodore. And I think my Matilda's still with us. Can you wait, Matilda?
There she is.
And that's my Matilda, who makes my sun rise and set every day.
Awesome. It's so nice to have your family with us tonight. Thank you for sharing her with us for this long, and I'm sure you're excited to get her back, kind of. She'll be busy. She's always going to be busy. But we, we have a plaque for you and some flowers, so we want to take some pictures and have your family come up and take photos, too. So, we want to take some pictures and have your family come up and take photos too.
I think Dad owes them a really big treat this year.
Yes, yes. A big treat is in store. Well, okay, now we have to go on with the meeting. Yeah. Okay, we have our committee reports. So, we have the Audit Committee Report by Ms. Julie Powell.
Okay. All right. So, I just wanted to let the rest of the Board know, to be aware of that the state is doing a systematic audit of school districts right now. So, they just completed Tooele, they did Alpine, they've done several, I believe Park City. Anyway, the Audit Committee, we're planning on taking a look at these so we can be ready because they don't typically tell you when you're going to be audited. But we're just trying to make sure that we cross our Ts, dot our Is, make sure we are doing what we should be doing. Second of all, I just want to clear up something that seems to be, can cause some confusion. So, the Audit Committee is by law, I'm going to read the statute, 53G7-401, composed of three members. And it's composed of people who are not administrators or employees of the local education agency. I'm just reading the law. So, I just, and it's also in our policy which just mirrors that law. So, I just want to make sure that people know that. That's not a choice. This is just law. Third thing I want to mention that other Board members might want to be interested in is the hotline. So, USBE, Utah State Board of Education, has a hotline for fraud, waste, abuse, or just any type of thing that people might be concerned about. And we also have a hotline on our website, but it's not as visible. We're talking about making it more noticeable. But anyway, how that process works is, and you can tell constituents if they're concerned, you can file an anonymous complaint. And they completely make it anonymous if you want. But there's also problems with that. If it's anonymous, you may not be able to get a report back. So, there's pros and cons to that. However, there is some value, in my opinion, of some anonymous reports because we can see patterns. So, anyway, that's one option that you can tell your constituents to use. So, the process is, when a complaint is filed to the hotline, it goes to USBE, the Utah State Board of Education, which typically gets sent back to Nate Lee, who is our internal auditor. He manages that, but he will also address it with administration, who will also take a look at that. USBE never used to. It used to be kind of our job as an Audit Committee to confirm that their processes were followed and things were taken care of. Now, USBE does confirm that on their own and they'll just verify it with us. So, I just want to let the rest of the Board know how that process works. And that's all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Powell. Ms. Powell is our Audit Committee Chair. And we have a committee report from Ms. Emily Price, our Board Vice President. And as you heard, she's been serving on the Davis Education Foundation Board.
Okay, I am just going to give an update on what has been happening this summer. On August 1st, we hosted the annual Child Spree at Kohl's Stores in Davis County. 500 children plus 500 volunteers equals a successful morning of shopping for students. And I was able to participate in that in Clinton. And as always, it's a wonderful event. And I don't know if you've all been able to participate in that, but you get a student and there's a little video of the student and they're just kind of saying a few things about them, maybe what their favorite color is or things that they like. And so, it makes it even more personalized experience shopping for a student in our district. And it's just a really great experience and opportunity. And then, part of the Child Spree, we were also able to have thousands of backpacks stuffed with supplies. And it helped our students to be ready for school to start. And I just want to thank America First, United Way, and the hundreds of volunteers for making this event possible. I know that when I go, I see a lot of just the local people in my own community that it's just something that they do, I think, on an annual basis. And so, that's always fun to see, community members. On August 7th, we hosted our first Express Golf Tournament. So, it's all the fun of an 18-hole tournament in half the time. And we just want to say thanks to Hogan Construction for sponsoring that event. On August 12th through the 14th, we did a Teacher Professional Development Day. And Hogan Construction also, they helped sponsor that and provided prizes for our teachers. And also want to say thanks to Sounds Club for providing the refreshments for all 5,000 teachers that participated in that. And we're so fortunate to have partners who care and are willing to invest in our teachers. Our Cash for Classrooms program is off to a great start. To date, we've granted more than $120,000 in grants to our teachers through the Cash for Classrooms program. And with this program, we're able to assist teachers with classroom supplies, equipment, and materials. And then, the Call Foundation granted $100,000. And these funds will be used to support the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And so, every Head Start or Title I and McKinnney-Vento student will receive a book mailed home each month. And that's pretty exciting for these students to be able to receive something in the mail once a month. And what's better than a book? And then, also $50,000 toward the Family Connection Center at North Davis Junior High and $25,000 for the Mission to the Moon Program for our 4th through 6th grade students in our schools. And then, here's just some upcoming events that you can be aware of as Board members. So, there's Stuff the Bus with Young Kia on September 13th from 11:00 to 1:00. And all the supplies and materials support our Head Start programs. And so, you can just stop by and check it out. And if you want to bring some items to donate, you can also do that. In our community, we'll have the 9/11 Day of Service. It's actually going to be on September 13th. But we just want to say thanks to the many stakes and wards and community groups who donate tens of thousands of supplies for our schools and for our teen centers. And then, on September 22nd, we'll have our Four Kids Golf at Oak Ridge Country Club. And you're invited to either come and welcome our guests at 7:00 in the morning or you can join us for lunch at 1:30. Just let Jody know if you would like to attend so that she can make sure that that's planned for. And then, we want to just say thanks to Hogan Construction for sponsoring that event as well. And lastly, the Foundation will launch a $250,000 Innovative Grant Program on October 1st. Teachers are able to apply for up to $5,000 and schools up to $10,000. And we're excited to see innovative requests that move the needle for our students. And I'm really excited about this. I think this will just give the opportunity for students throughout the district and teachers and principals to kind of determine what the needs are at their individual schools or in their individual classrooms and to have the funds to do different things. And I just want to end with saying thanks to our wonderful sponsors, the great people in our community who volunteer and support the different activities that we do and for the work of the Davis Education staff and Board. Jody mentioned this. There's a lot of people that put their heart and soul into this. And I'm just grateful for all the wonderful people that we have in our community that help with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Okay, we have the other Board reports. We'll start down here with Ms. Barber.
Thank you. It's been a good couple of weeks with school in session. I will be brief, which is what I always say. It was really great. I'm sad a lot of the Lincoln Elementary families left, but it was good to visit a lot of them and hear from them. I was telling quite a few people, the very first comment I made in a school board meeting scared me to death. It was years ago and it was about an immersion program, possible change. And so, we came and spoke and I've just stayed involved, obviously, ever since. So, I'm really appreciative of them coming and I love hearing about just the culture of the schools. And every school is different. And so, it's interesting and really good for us to have that purview there. Last week, or at the end of August, I had my first official UHSAA Board of Trustees meeting. And that was really insightful. It was good to be there and represent Davis School District. I got assigned to the Financial and Legislative Committees. And so, I think that'll be a really good opportunity to advocate for our needs and make sure our activities are well-funded. And as a follow-up, I talked about this earlier, but Representative Hall sent out a survey about possible moratorium changes. And that'll be going out to district families of athletes. And so, make sure you fill that out and give some feedback. I think that's one thing we're hearing a lot from. And it'll be good to make sure that our district is represented. And the best way to support students and athletes, and obviously, there's a really fine balance there. There's also an emerging sports survey that goes out, I learned about, that is really exciting. So, make sure you fill that out and just talk about where you're competing in sports or activities outside of those that are sanctioned. And that's how they kind of gauge upcoming sports. So, that's always an exciting thing to be on. And then, there's also talk about realignment that doesn't happen this year but is gearing up. And so, it seems like it's always in the works because it takes a couple of years to plan and get ready. So, I'm learning a lot about that. And activities are a huge, huge part of our school offerings. And I love learning about it and supporting students that way. And I'm sure this will get talked about, but I just really love being at the new school openings. I don't think that'll ever happen again, at least in my lifetime, being at three ribbon cuttings at the beginning of school. But that was really fun. So, I love that and I love seeing the personal touches that our architectural and construction firms added. I think Dr. Linford said it best, we could have built kind of boring schools, but for the same price and investment. We have architects and designers that add special touches that go such a long way and make a school beautiful and exciting. And I was just so proud of all of them to be there. So, thanks, everyone, for their work on that.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Ms. Mercer?
Awesome. It has been wonderful to be back in school. And I'm going to try and be brief also. I went to the Night with the Wildcats, which was put on by one of our teacher fellows at Woods Cross High School, where she put together a phenomenal, comprehensive booklet for parents that are English language learners to help them learn how to make sure that they're applying for fee waivers, that they are applying for free and reduced lunch, and also, most importantly, that they are logged on to my DSD and tracking their kids' progress. So, that is going to be a phenomenal resource. And I would love to make sure that we're sharing that with other schools as well. I also went to the Catalyst Back to School Night, which was fun to see all the students excited about Catalyst. And our waitlist is currently, I think, about half the size of the amount of students that are in the program. So, that is a program that has a lot of support and a lot of excitement. And I have a son who's participating there and it's really exciting. I also went to the ribbon cutting at Bountiful Elementary. And having had, my father-in-law was in the first class at Bountiful Elementary and my son attended Bountiful Elementary. And there were lots of difficulties in that building, one of which is it being an unreinforced masonry building. And so, I was, as the spouse of a geologist, I was especially excited to know that we are, our students will be safer as well as being in a beautiful building that has so many more resources available. I also went to Odyssey Elementary to have lunch with their teachers and participated in their belonging training, which was great to be able to get to know them better. And the Bountiful Elementary Community Resource Night was phenomenal as well. It was great to see so many community resources. And I was especially impressed that so many of the families in that community were there. It was very well-attended. I was able to go with Woods Cross High School Orchestra on their tour of local elementary schools. And I got to spend the day on a bus. And with Ms. Patty, who actually commented earlier and gave public comment, I was impressed with not only our orchestra program, which amazingly, so many of the orchestra students in that got their start by participating in 6th grade orchestra. And that program is such an amazing resource to our district. And I was very impressed with the bus driving. And the heat on the bus was also, it made me, give me more appreciation for our bus drivers. I've also spent quite a bit of time over the last several weeks reading and responding to emails in regards to our truth and taxation and most recently, in regards to transportation. And that really is top of mind to me as well right now. And I'm grateful for those who came to speak on that issue. And that is something that I have spent a lot of time in the last several weeks concerned about.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer. Okay, Ms. Hogan?
Okay. My microphone. My daughter also started her cello career, 6th grade orchestra. It's a real thing. A few things I've done or been able to do is, we did have a meeting, me and Ms. Powell. We had a meeting with a group of parents about questions about the tech in schools. And I enjoyed that conversation and look forward to future conversations as we work to meet the parents' concerns at that meeting. We had our first calendar committee last week, which is always a fun time. The calendar, we are going to have another meeting in September. And then, hopefully, we will have it towards, we will have the calendar to give to the Board in October for us to look at and to vote on. The things that are always discussed are the two-week winter break, first semester ending at winter break, full week of spring break, school ending before Memorial Day. And then, the concern of when we have to start in August is always the main topics of conversation. So, if you have questions about the calendar, get with me. And then, the last thing that I spent a lot of time is on the Finance Committee. Well, we've done this for several months. But in the last several weeks, I've met with Mr. Lefel a few times for him to once again explain things so I could fully understand what we were proposing to the public at Truth and Taxation and the care that he took and that we tried to do as a committee to make sure we were being responsible with the funds that have been given to us from the taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Ms. Price?
Okay. Since you bring that up, Ms. Hogan, I do want to express my gratitude. I felt bad that I didn't thank the Finance Committee at Truth and Taxation because I know that you guys put in a lot of work in preparation for Truth and Taxation. And so, I thank the three committee members for that and Mr. Lefel as well and whoever else might have helped in that preparation. I was able to attend the very beginning of the new educator orientation. And it was really exciting to just be lined up with the drum line at Farmington High School and student body officers and the cheerleaders and our directors and administrators at the district to welcome the new employees. I thought it was just a great opportunity for our new educators to feel loved and appreciated. And I just thought it was a great, it was just synergistic. And I hope that those new educators are able to just feel that love and are excited to be teaching as they have started a new career for some of these people. I also went to the Student Advisory Committee Opening Social. And it's always just so fun to see our student body officers at each high school and just so grateful for the effort that you guys put in and for your example to your peers. And we really value what you have to say. And so, thank you for that. It's great to have our Clearfield, a couple of our Clearfield officers here with us tonight. I've attended my different committee meetings this last month and really enjoyed the ribbon cutting at Sunset Junior High, Bountiful Elementary, and Horizon Junior High. And while I was at Bountiful, I sent my dad a text and I said, "Did you go to Bountiful Elementary?" And he did. So, I've got, and my aunts and uncles all went there, so, you know, back in the day, back in the 50s. So, that was just a fun connection to be there. that was just a fun connection to be there, where my dad had gone to elementary school. And then also, I was able to attend the Clearfield Community Night, and that was amazing, just to see the turnout of the community members just surrounded by North Davis Junior High, South Clearfield Junior, or South Clearfield Elementary, and then Clearfield High just clustered together, and just all these people excited to be there, to be just members of that community and members of those school communities. And it was just, it was a great turnout, and hope that our different communities feel like they have a place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Stevens. Yep.
All right. It's great to be back in school. I'll be really quick. Since a lot of the things I've attended have already been mentioned, just busy with committee meetings and loved going to the ribbon cuttings and the Community Night at Bountiful Elementary, and then I also really appreciated the tutorial that went out about setting up MyDSD on your home screen, that it's like an app. Thank you so much. Total game changer for me.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Ms. Powell?
Anything else? Yeah. So, attended Audit Policy Committee meeting, and policy, we'll discuss the policies further in this meeting. I went to various orientations and Back-to-School Nights, and we've had quite a bit of constituent feedback as school has started. Kind of a lot of the same stuff that you've had, so it's been, kept us busy. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot has been mentioned. We've had a lot going on. It's been a busy start to the year, but it's been a great, fantastic start to the school year. I loved the new teacher orientation as well. It's great to have new teachers, and they're so excited and happy to be there, and we're happy to welcome them. The leadership conference that we had before school started was amazing, and, you know, these events don't just happen. We have a great group over here at this table that puts so much time and effort into these events, and we so appreciate all they do to make those successful, and the work of our superintendents, and all the presenters and directors, and all the work that goes into these conferences. Of course, the ribbon cuttings were amazing, and yeah, I don't know that that's going to happen that close together again, but it was wonderful opening those new schools. And I've been visiting a lot of schools since school started, and something I universally hear from our administrators and our teachers is this statement, "It is great to have kids back in the building." And I'm just so appreciative of our teachers and administrators and parents. You know, we all love the students of Davis School District, so it's great to have them back. I've been able to attend several football games already. I have a special little football player named Ethan that I like to watch, and others at other schools doing other jobs at the football games, you know, leading cheers and getting people excited. And I just love observing good sportsmanship that goes on in our district from our coaches, our athletes, and our fans, and I really appreciate that. The Community Night at Bountiful Elementary was great. That is a beautiful new school, and it was fun to be able to welcome community members and families there. They're very excited about it, and it's just good to know that we have so many valuable resources, resources for our families in Davis School District, and thank you to all those that came to share that information. The foundation held a kickoff lunch at Lagoon this past week, and that was great to attend that. The lunch, thank you, Jody, that was so much fun. The lunch was delicious, and the new area of the park, called the district, is beautiful, and the new rides are fun and exciting, and Emily and I could tell how fun they were by looking at the faces of those that were on the rides. Couldn't we, Emily? There was a comment about that by Dr. Montero. Yeah, but anyway, those who rode the rides had a lot of fun, so thank you for that. That was fun.
Yes, Lagoon sponsored.
Yes, yes. And I actually was going to mention that. We just are so appreciative of our community members that give so much, Lagoon including, and there are many other companies that just give and give and give to our district and to the children in Davis School District. So we're just so appreciative, not just of their generous monetary donations, but of their generous donations of time. They spend a lot of time in our district, in our schools, doing what they can to help the children of Davis School District. So we're so appreciative of them, and I want to thank them. And this has been said, but want to, again, let the finance committee know, and Mr. Leffle, Superintendent Linford, and others, how appreciative we are of the work that was done, culminating in the truth and taxation. And, you know, many, many, many months of work and thought went into that budget, so I appreciate all the work that was done there. And I also appreciate the effort that was made to get the correct information out there, because there was a lot of wrong, false information that was floating around. So it was great to be able to get the correct information out there. So thank you for those who did that. And now we are excited to hear about Clearfield High School from our student body officers. They have a report for us. So we have Mr. Luke Stanford and Ms. Madeline Anderson, their student body officers there at Clearfield, and I'll let them decide who goes first.
I guess I'll start.
Okay.
First of all, good evening, everyone, and we'd like to express our gratitude to the board for having us here tonight to share a little bit about Clearfield High School. So every year at Clearfield High School, we have a school theme, and this year we decided that our theme would be Clearfield United. We chose this theme because we believe that this perfectly describes Clearfield High School. We, as a school, are always seeking ways to be united, whether it be through spirit, academics, service. We always look out for each other. Recently, as many of you may know, football season has started up. Clearfield High is known for its uplifting and exciting school spirit. We, just two weeks ago, won our first home game in over four years. And let me tell you, the school spirit was pretty awesome. The number of high fives, cheers, and even crying faces was enough to fill a lifetime of joy. We won that night, but not just on the game, but we won because we laughed, smiled, cheered, and spent time together as Falcons, all while staying aligned with our values of keeping it classy. But not only is the spirit on the field and in the stands, it fills our hallways, constantly looking for ways to spread small pieces of school spirit. In the hallways include saying hi to others or inviting classmates to the choir concert on Friday. Clearfield's spirit shines everywhere.
Clearfield prides itself on academic programs that support student goals. In addition to AP and CE classes that help students excel and prepare for college, we also have international baccalaureate classes. The IBU program is another advanced program that is recognized globally. We're the only school in Davis School District that has an IBU program. Last summer, construction on our new CTE building began and is the starting of transforming Clearfield High and adding to our legacy. We're excited to see the future possibilities the CTE building will bring to students and teachers once it opens next year. Another way that Clearfield stays united is through service, specifically with our winter fundraiser, Falcons Are Fabulous. Falcons Are Fabulous is our annual fundraiser that takes place two weeks before winter break. Last year, our service officers chose to work with Davis Education Foundation to add an accessible playground at South Clearfield Elementary to support play and friendship for students of all abilities. The original fundraising goal that we set was $60,528, but we completely exceeded that by raising $104,291.05.
Wow.
The whole school was completely ecstatic during the check reveal of our final assembly. I still remember everyone, including me, shooting out from our seats, cheering, and maybe even crying in celebration. That moment truly proved how all of our efforts as the student body came together to make a huge difference in our community. We have yet to announce this year's charity, but we are excited to continue living up to the fact that Falcons are fabulous and always will be. Thank you for having us today, and we are grateful for the support from the school board, and we're excited to be included in this meeting. Go Falcons!
Yeah, thank you. That was a wonderful report. We love to hear from you, and feel free, if you want to make a comment. No, you're, we would love to hear from you on any of the other subjects we're talking about. So, but we appreciated that report on Clearfield. Appreciate your great principle being here tonight, Mr. Barker, and supporting you. And if you have parents or family members in the audience, would you like to introduce them, and your advisors also?
We don't have parents in the audience.
No?
We have artificial parents here in the audience.
Artificial parents! That look like parents as they raise their phones and take pictures of us.
Yes, okay. Do you want to introduce them?
Mrs. Hahn, and then Mr. Rumbaugh.
Awesome. Thank you for being here to support them. We appreciate what you do. Yeah, let's give them a clap. That's wonderful. Takes a lot of support, and I know they learn so much, and they will learn a lot this year from your tutelage. So thank you for being here. So, all right, Superintendent Linford has a report.
Okay, this will be brief. I do want to point out what a difference and a change in leadership can make for winning football games. You know, I'm just, sometimes we make a move because we know we just need to make a move so we can get some football games won.
All you, TJ.
I agree.
Uh-oh.
You know, my first year as a principal, we went from winning no-region championships the year before to winning 17 my first year. It helped that we moved into a region that was easier to win, a region championship. But I like to take credit for that as a principal. So good job, TJ. That's good leadership. Okay, so I just, the board saw these numbers, and I want to, I want to put some of them in context just quickly. Our AP pass rate improved from 84%, which is already pretty incredible. AP tests are hard. They are hard, to 86%. So that's a 2% growth. That's an awesome, substantial growth. And then our junior high pass rate, that's the high school pass rate, our junior high pass rate went from 62% to 74%. So that's dramatic. Go junior highs, who are just doing excellent work there. Our high school CTE enrollments, and you know, we've invested in CTE, we're invested in offering students opportunities to gain real-life skills in those courses, and those courses have grown, jumped in enrollments, over 2,700, a student jump in enrollment in CTE. Our CE credits earned jumped an incredible 9,649 credit increase from the year prior. So a great jump there. We're grateful for the work that people, our teachers and our administration counselors are doing to get kids in those courses. And then our CTE pathway completers, and that's completing an entire pathway in a CTE program, really, again, a challenging pathway for students to choose, and we had a 314 student increase from last year. So appreciate our good people in those areas, and we have lots of areas where we've grown, but especially those high academic areas that are central to our focus. It's good to see those numbers jump, and our students having great success.
Thank you, Superintendent Linford. A lot of great news there, so thank you for sharing that. Okay, we're to the portion of our agenda where we have our consent items, and I would like to hear a motion on those, unless someone has one they would like to move to a business item.
I'll move that we approve the consent items.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Barber and a second by Ms. Price to approve the consent items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, our business items. Okay. So our first business item is our board calendar, and hopefully you've all had a chance to look at that. And these are our proposed meeting dates for next year. Are there any questions on these, or any corrections? Okay, I'll need a motion to approve that, then.
I move to approve the 2026 board meeting calendar as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Price, and a second by Ms. Stevens. Is there any discussion on the calendar? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, we have Dr. Fidel Montero. I was going to give him a new name. Dr. Fidel Montero, he's going to come up, and we're going to talk about Head Start and early Head Start reports.
Good afternoon, good evening, good evening.
Yes.
Hey, congrats to the students from Clearfield High School. Listen, it's never that bad, you know, when Superintendent Linford was in junior high, I think he was pinned for 30 straight matches in a row when he wrestled. So it's okay, you guys, hang in there. Okay? Dear board, it's good to be in front of you. I'm kidding about that, by the way.
Not that far off.
I'm going to hear about it later.
Yes, you are.
I have the opportunity to share the space with Mary Ann Henderson, who's our director of our Head Start, and I just want to, she's been patiently waiting to talk about some budgetary and other sorts of permissions, and would like to personally invite whoever in the next few months, in the next month or so, wants to do a visit of the Head Start. We want to organize something that the board could attend. So on that note, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Hey, President Gerard, board, and Superintendent Linford. Sorry. Like Dr. Fidel said, I am Mary Ann Henderson. I'm the director of Head Start, and I am here seeking approval for a one-time funding opportunity. The Office of Head Start has put out a one-time funding opportunity based in nutrition and health only, and so we are asking to apply for the application, apply for the grant. What we will be seeking is, and I had to write it down so I could remember, we have a collaboration, a partnership with Utah State University, where they come and do their fun, health, food curriculum in our classrooms. It was cut through Snap Ed. So we are asking, as part of this grant, we are going to ask for funding to do this again for the next year as they look for more funding, but this is where they come into the classroom. They teach healthy nutrition, they teach, you know, I'm trying to think of the right word, like body movement, stuff like that, exercise, and they work, and they do each lesson in one of our classrooms. They also come to what we call our be there's, where parents are there, and they do like a whole lesson. So we're asking for funding to support that, and also to provide opportunities out in the community. So we would invite Head Start parents, but also community members where they would teach classes, that they could come to in the north, south, or the central area of the district. So that would cover their salary and prep time and materials. We're also asking for a one-time fund for meal car, car, mail delivery, mail, car delivery, however you want to say it. Our van is kind of going the way. It's pretty old, so we're asking to replace it with an updated car where we can do mail delivery services, because in our standalone buildings, we have to go pick up the food, either from an elementary or from Canyon Heights, and deliver it to the classrooms. The rest of our classes are out in elementary school, so it's just there. And then summer, we do a little extended summer for early Head Starts, so they go pick up food where their summer lunches. And we also were asking to acquire two high-grade blenders, so teachers or staff can use it as they are teaching about healthy nutrition in the classroom, so they can show what to do with vegetables when they've expired, like maybe make smoothies or soups or something like that. Also to purchase a commercial fridge for another one, for one of our buildings that needs it. We also want to collaborate with the high school childcares and provide them opportunities if they are interested to do the USU curriculum too, so they would go in and teach the older kids in the high schools in the childcares. We're asking for garden boxes, and honestly, this is part of, we're going to be asking for funding further down at Wasatch Elementary to replace the playground. So right now, I'm going to ask for garden boxes out of this one time. That would be part of that revamping of at the Davis Community Learning Center. part of that revamping of at the Davis Community Learning Center. So we would add garden boxes. And then the last thing would be alternative healthy food sources, and this is just with the new CACFP ruling, to do special requests. And we'd already kind of asked parents, and they wanted some, so this would be just extra money that we could support with that for this year to help them with their special meal requests. We're also asking for a one-time waiver on this grant, so that would total $69,000. We would ask for a one-time waiver. As part of a federal grant, we have to pay back the federal government in in-kind hour or non-federal share, if that makes better sense. So we get a lot of our in-kind from the school district. We ask it from our parents through the goals that they set with their kids and the hours that they work with their kids and their volunteer hours. That's how we pay back the federal government. But we are going to ask for a waiver on that non-federal share for the $69,000 because we don't want to put that back on to parents or the district or the community to have to pay back that 20% of that grant.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. We so appreciate you being here. Are there questions? Ms. Hogan?
So just to be clear, this is more just a question for us. So are we voting on that right now? Is that what we're voting on?
Yeah, we're voting to approve. Yeah.
So what exactly, tell me exactly what we're voting on. I know...
You're voting, so because we're shared governance, we have to get our parent approval through our policy council, which they've approved, and then we come to the board, and then they approve, or that we can submit the application to the Office of Head Start for this one-time funding.
Thank you.
I'm sure you explained that. It just...
No, it's okay. It gets really complicated.
It does, but I really am glad that you're here. I want to thank you. You're doing a great job as Director of Head Start, and I really think what you've shared with us tonight, you know, this information really paints a good picture of the great things that are going on at Head Start and explains some of the things that you do there. So I really appreciate that. Any more questions? Ms. Powell?
Hi. Questions are good. Yeah, so I just want to clarify too. So you're not asking our board for money. You're just asking permission for the grant slash waiver.
We're asking permission to submit the grant.
Submit the grant.
To the Office of Head Start.
Right.
So this will be federal funds that if we're approved, will come back to our program. It's one-time, one-year-only federal funds.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion, and then we can have more discussion if needed. But is there a motion to approve the Head Start, early Head Start reports as presented?
Yeah, I move to approve the Head Start, early Head Start reports as presented.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second by Ms. Mercer to approve the Head Start, early Head Start reports as presented. Any more discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of this approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate all you do. Okay, we have Mr. Ben Anofio coming up right now, and he is going to talk about 2HR-114.
I can tell we save the best for last, the policy work.
Always.
So President, Superintendent, members of the board, we just have our second reading on this Shine Policy. You'll recall this is the policy we have to incentivize hard-defined positions. We present it to you with no changes from the last time, and we recommend that you pass it on second and final reading.
If there are no questions, I will take a motion.
I move to approve 2HR-114 supplement for highly-needed educators on the second and final reading.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Price. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Price and a second by Ms. Mercer to approve 2HR-114 salary supplement for highly-needed educators on the second and final reading. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, next one.
Great. This is the employee time and attendance policy. It comes to us, there was an audit performed, and we realized that we needed to have a few more policy arrangements here. This is our procedures for tracking hourly work hours. Workers who are typically hourly must be paid for overtime, have accurate time entry, things like that. So this on first reading, this was recommended by the policy committee, so we recommend that it pass on first reading.
Okay. Any questions? It's for Mr. Anofio on this one. Nope, seeing none. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve policy 2HR-005 employee time and attendance on first reading.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Powell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Powell and a second by Ms. Price to approve 2HR-005 employee time and attendance on first reading. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, both of those passed. Thank you so much. Okay, we have Mr. Tim, Dr. Timothy Best, our Healthy Lifestyles Director, and he is going to talk about a curriculum review committee.
Good evening, members of the board. Thanks for carving some time out for me tonight to talk about getting this Materials Review Committee approved for the 25-26 school year. So that meets the state code of our board rule, R277, 474-4-5, and state rule of 53G-10-402. That requires us to have board approval for our human sexuality and materials review. So we are the gatekeeper for any curricular areas such as Intoda, Nurse Science, or obviously our health courses, psych courses, biology, science, anything that has human sexuality or physiology contained in it has to come through our committee. And this year, it's an administrative approval for three new members, and those were highlighted in the document that was sent to you. And also, we have two new teachers in our building that teach health content. And so pending any further questions, if we could approve that, the committee for 25-26 school year, then we'll get to work.
Okay, are there questions?
President Gerard?
Ms. Hogan?
Okay, I was just curious if you could... You kind of explained how the committee comes together. Is this a committee that is revamped every year, or do you keep the same one? And do they have to work through something every year, or are they just there when the curriculum comes through that needs to be approved?
Appreciate the question. So a couple of things on that. Each, our parents that are selected, this year was administrative approval or selection, and those are from a north, central, south area of our district. They serve two-year terms. So even though we approve them manually, this current new three individuals will serve a two-year term, and then next year, we'll do a lottery selection to fulfill those other three spots. We meet on a quarterly basis unless there's a need for additional materials to be reviewed.
Okay, so when you meet on the quarterly, are you, what are you discussing?
Sure, so what we task, our teachers are great. I ask them if they want to introduce new materials, whether it's a video or a guest speaker or a research article that contains human sexuality aspects or components. It has to be medically accurate, has to meet the state core standards in their curricular area, developmentally appropriate, and has to enhance, improve the student learning. And so they're pretty good with vetting that piece before it gets to our committee, and then our committee just looks at it through a lens that's prescribed by the state, and then we just check off the boxes. So we have, you know, communication on, well, kid doesn't need to learn this, they don't need to learn that, but it all goes back to, you know, the boxes that we sign off on. Is it medically accurate? Is it approved through the USBE with state standards or strands and age-appropriate? And it doesn't, you know, there's some other things, like it can't advocate for intricacies of intercourse. It can't provide instruction on contraceptive devices. Our junior highs are abstinence only. Our high schools are abstinent-based. So if it meets all those metrics, then each person fills out their form, and it's just a majority either pass, or we reject it, or we can send it back with revisions.
Okay.
So a question, so just to follow up on these administrative appointments. So you have one in the north, central, and south. So is it the principals that get together and just in those areas and come up with the name?
Good question. So I reach out to just a principal in that area. Two years ago, it was my wife in the south because I knew where we were.
Yeah, convenient.
Yeah. And then usually they have some volunteers that, you know, were interested that would make good representatives, and then they submit those to me, and I reach out to them, and then here we are, seeking your approval. And then every other year, it's just a lottery if you're interested.
Okay, so it switches off administrative appointments and then the lottery appointments?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the rule and code is that we have an equal amount of parents compared to district employees, and we just have two more, two more parents on the board than required.
Okay, Ms. Hogan, did you have an...
Well, just out of curiosity, do you have for the lottery, do you get enough people willing to put their name in there?
We do. Yeah, we have hundreds that would like to volunteer for this committee.
Wow.
It's fun.
That's great.
Until nine or 10 at night, or you guys are welcome to join us at any time.
Okay.
Same with you Falcons. You have anything better to do than...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any more questions for Dr. Best? Ms. Powell?
I just have a quick question. So my understanding by law, the board needs to approve this curriculum. The committee makes recommendations, but the board always approves? Or is that not correct?
Yeah, so yeah, so once it passes through our committee, then it goes to Director Strain, and it goes to the two open house procedures, and then the fourth step is the school board.
Correct. President Gerard, may I have permission to ask a question to the superintendent?
Sure.
I was just wondering, in your opinion, do you feel like this committee, and I don't know if you've looked at it, represents a balanced view of our community, like how they would feel about this human development curriculum?
Yeah, you know, that's, I haven't participated in any of the committees, obviously. So no, my role would be primarily oversight. My sense is that because the committees are made up of our community members, I have been a director and a superintendent and tried to get committees to participate. So to have a good, broad representation, you know, other than we kind of voluntold people. So I think the method of having principals point us towards involved parents. Typically, my experience is we have community council members and folks that principals point to and recommend, but it'd be hard for me to say that's a, they represent the community. But I think generally, yeah, like all of our committees, especially those that are selected, you know, kind of pointed to by the principal. Because, you know, Tim from his office knows his circle of, you know, parents that he communicates with, but principals have a really good sense of it. So I think that's probably our best shot at it, be my best answer to that.
Okay, thank you. So can I just ask one more question, Mr. Best? So in your opinion, then, do you kind of know these people very well, or is it just mostly you just go by principal recommendations? I'm just curious how the process is.
Sure, yeah, happy to answer. So I don't know any of these people until they join the committee, but we have good dialogue, and there's also that active consent. So if a parent's not comfortable with, you know, any human sexuality unit, which we give them the at least two weeks' prior to instruction, they have to sign that they want their kid in receiving that materials, and at any point in time, they can look through the materials, the lesson plans, the content prior to signing off. But we've had dialogue where parents are, you know, they look at it, and this helps answer your question, Ms. Powell, where they think that no kid should receive the content, but we go back to the prescribed form that follows state code and board rule where, you know, well, that's a personal opinion. Is it medically accurate? Does it, you know, tie into the core standards, which are approved by the school boards? Does it enhance learning? Is it age development? Does it not advocate for, you know, some of the human sexuality component? So it's, you know, the dialogue is good, but it always, you know, we go back to the form, and that kind of flushes itself out.
Yeah, my understanding is the states, the state statutes are pretty strict on this.
They are, correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for Dr. Best? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Mercer?
I move to approve the 2025-2026 Curriculum Review Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Mercer and a second by Ms. Stevens to approve the 2025-2026 Curriculum Review Committee. Any more discussion?
Can we have the Human Sexuality Committee for that motion? Just so it's clear.
Okay.
I move to approve the 2025-2026 Human Sexuality Curriculum Review Committee.
Great.
I still second it.
Okay, so that's good. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Mercer and a second by Ms. Stevens to approve the 2025-2026 Human Sexuality Curriculum Review Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Okay, thank you, Dr. Best. We appreciate you. Okay, we have Mr. Tim Luffel, our business administrator, is going to talk about West Point City.
This will be way easier than human sexuality, I believe.
Okay.
After many years working with West Point City and building Horizon Junior High, we have an agreement. As you know, West Point City has partnered with us to build a double-sized gym at Horizon, and so this agreement that we worked through details all the different uses and who gets it when and different things like that. I just want to recognize Mayor Vincent and Kyle Laws at West Point, amazing people and so nice to work with on this agreement. Had a few sticky issues we had to work through, and they were so good to work through them with us, and so appreciate them so much. Appreciate Mr. Anofio for working through this agreement with us. He was a little nervous about having joint ownership of a facility, probably still is, but he was good to work with on this. So we would recommend, the city has already approved this agreement, and so we would recommend that the board approve this tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Luffel. Are there questions for Mr. Luffel? Okay, this is very exciting. So if there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the inter-local agreement with Davis School District and West Point City.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Price and a second by Ms. Hogan to approve the inter-local agreement between Davis School District and West Point City. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. All right, Dr. Doug Forsgren, one of our elementary directors, is going to talk about Eagle Bay Elementary.
Honorary doctor evidently, because I haven't earned one yet.
I saw that. Oh, wait a minute, mister, okay, yeah.
No plans in the near future.
There we go. I see what I did there. Well, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Honorary doctor from the board, thank you. President Gerard, Vice President Price, board member, superintendent. We just need to go back and revisit Eagle Bay boundaries once again. As you recall, last year, we passed, just based on a study, we passed a proposal to As you recall, last year, we passed, just based on a study, we passed a proposal to bus students who wanted a traditional English experience in first through third grades to Canyon Creek Elementary. And we are, there's no, that problem persists, of course, going forward. So we want to propose studying this once again to look in the future. That was going to be a one-year fix for us. And we want to look at maybe having something that's a little bit, that extends past that. You know, we have to, we have, the fourth grade will be zero English students there. And so any students that need a traditional English program, then we need to decide how we want to handle those situations. So similar to last year, we just want to propose that we look at studying the Eagle Bay enrollment to address the anticipated low English class enrollment in grades four through six going forward.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Forsgren? Ms. Mercer?
I have a question, perhaps slash comment. I, we've seen tonight with our public comments, the impassioned feelings of parents that are involved in our dual-language immersion programs. And I feel like some of the comments that hit me were, one, saying that they were choosing to be at that school for the reason of that dual-language immersion program. It feels like we are individually addressing specific schools and their enrollment. And I would be interested in seeing how we can look at that more systemically and perhaps look at the possibility of having magnet programs that families could choose to enroll in that dual-language immersion program. And specifically at a school, I realize we're not talking about Lincoln here at all, we're talking about Eagle Bay. But I would love to look at those as a whole and try to solve the problem systemically rather than individually in a school-by-school basis. So I don't know if that's something that we as a board can, how do we initiate that conversation?
That'll be a great, I feel like that's a question to the board.
Yeah.
You know, the enrollment issue, it's very, sorry, superintendent.
Go ahead, and then we'll jump in.
The studies are two very different things, right? Whereas we have an ongoing, you know, thriving dual-language program at Eagle Bay, but the English side is suffering. And DLI at Lincoln is not about enrollment either. That's more just about looking at the effectiveness of things and looking at, you know, looking at the attrition, what's taking place there. So I mean, that is.
And I guess in regards to Eagle Bay, my preference would be to, whenever possible, allow the traditional or the English program to, for students to be able to attend their neighborhood school to do that. And the dual-language immersion should be the opt-in rather than the opt-out. So I'm definitely in favor of doing a study here, but I would just love to understand how do we do a study of those systems on a district-wide rather than on an individual school basis?
Well, do you want to?
Stuff we can talk about. I mean.
Do you have something you want to say on that? Okay.
I could, I could say something about that. I think in my conversations, even back when I was a school director, from the earliest conversations we've had, there is a, you know, and I think my cabinet and my team knows that I have this pull about what a true dual-language immersion program should be. It should not be a selection of winners and losers, that you are lucky that we chose your school to get this benefit and another school does not get it. Same goes for other programming that we have, that it has much higher attendance by the folks that can walk to the school versus these programs. I mean, DLI programs ultimately are magnet programs. But we know that as we've canceled programs, that parents have not chosen to continue in the other school. So one of the challenges I really think ultimately is transportation. And autonomous school buses may be the answer to everything. I mean, sincerely, I mean, my sense is we're about a decade away from that, but that'll solve a lot of these issues. But it's transportation and it's those youngsters, those kiddos in elementary, that, man, they just can't get themselves there. If these were high school kids, we, you know, we've even talked about having, you know, we've been talking about doing what we've been doing at the Catalyst for a generation. So we do believe the model, the most pure model would be a magnet model, but we feel like it would disenfranchise those that can't travel. In the same way that we disenfranchise people that can't travel now with our current system where if you're lucky to live by the school, you get the benefits that the Davis School District has provided. If you don't, you know, you're kind of on your own.
As we also do with our DEEP program.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Linford, appreciate your input and Mr. Forsgren also. And also, Ms. Mercer, thank you for your questions and your input. You know, the great thing about our school district and those that work here every day and study these things every day is they're always available and open to board members to come in and have a discussion and learn all the details and listen to input. And they're always willing and open that we can go in and do that. We also have opportunities in workshops that we can have discussions about these things. And, you know, we can put it on an agenda for a workshop and always have open discussion and get input and feedback from board members that way as well. So, but we just really appreciate the availability and openness of all these amazing employees that we have who work and study this kind of thing every single day, that they're willing to meet with us and talk to us and answer our questions about those kind of things. So thank you. Okay. Ms. Powell?
Can I, yes. So, Mr. Forsgren, I was just wondering, so because this is a second initiation of a study, I know by statute we have to follow all these procedures. Are you going to initiate the whole kind of public comment procedure again?
We'll follow, we'll follow the same time, not exact same timeframe, but we'll follow the same procedures that are required, yes.
Okay, and I was just wondering, I don't know if this is appropriate to ask in board meeting, but I don't know, but because this is my geographical area that I represent. Would it be possible, could you let me know if, when you guys are having this meeting so I can attend and listen to all the feedback?
So we did not have an open house last time about that. What we did is we went and presented, we went and presented and talked with the faculty and staff at each of the schools.
Right.
Which that information is still going to be the same. So we don't anticipate doing that again. As far as the timeframe, of course, we have to follow all those legalities set out by that law to do that.
Right.
We will still make available, make available, you know, the comments via the forms and the email that we do, just like we need to do in each of these boundary studies.
I guess my question would be, as a board member, would it be possible for me to participate in this so I can hear the detailed discussions? Both from administrative standpoint and from the school-level standpoint?
So are you, I know that we have the open houses scheduled for, several scheduled for October, is that what you're talking about, attending the open houses? What are you talking about?
Once again, we won't have an open house for this one.
For this one, but we have two other ones scheduled in October. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Well, actually, I was talking about the staff meetings.
Dr. Toon?
Thank you, and I apologize for jumping in on Doug's agenda item. There's a, there's a couple of processes happening and it's a little confusing because we got a bunch of different states going, no, you're here, you're here, stay here.
Don't you go anywhere.
Thirty seconds is all I need. Any study that involves a program closure, like a dual-language immersion program closure or a DEEP program closure or a school closure, has one set of criteria that we need to follow. That criteria is, involves two opportunities for public comment in a board meeting. That's just the regularly scheduled public comment, like the one you had today. And a public hearing at the site of the proposed closure. The other process is when there's not a closure involved, but just a boundary change like this Eagle Bay one.
Just like Eagle Bay.
Requires a certain number of days of notice for the email to go out with the public input form and as well as a public hearing, but that public hearing doesn't need to be held on-site. And so that public hearing is tentatively scheduled. The board would initiate the study today. We would send a form out to parents with the feedback that they would gather, have the meetings, and then have a public hearing where parents and anybody in the community can come to the board to express their opinions directly to the board in that setting. And then the board would make determination at that point after the public hearing. In between then and there, we also will come and make a proposal based on preliminary findings from the survey and from the initial discussions that we have with the community at large. And I don't know how that changes your question, if it does at all, but that's the process that we will follow. And the same thing will happen for Lincoln where we'll have a recommendation and then the whole process that will follow after that.
Thank you, Dr. Toon. And I think it is really important for everyone to remember that we do have a process that we follow. And we have the other two public hearings scheduled, I believe, for October. So that's on there.
President Gerard?
Yes.
I wonder if we should vote on the motion and then continue discussion for this?
We can, but we can also, we can do that, but we can also ask clarifying questions before we even have a motion. So is there, are there any other clarifying questions of Mr. Forsgren? Okay, seeing none, let's take a motion and a second, and then we can continue the discussion if need be.
I move that we initiate a boundary study to address the low English enrollment in grades four through six at Eagle Bay Elementary.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second, was that Ms. Powell, did you say that? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Price and a second by Ms. Powell to initiate a boundary study to address low English enrollment in grades four through six at Eagle Bay Elementary. Okay, any more discussion?
I was just going to make a comment, but I learned a lot about the study process. And I think this is, it's really good to know that the administration works in a methodical way to look at all aspects of it. And hearing from the community is such a vital part of that. So I'm really glad that we have these opportunities. The public comments go a really long way to us as a board that will be eventually voting on this. So thank you for clarifying that. And so my question is, if you came back on this study, or really any of the studies, and recommended not closing, but maybe recommended just some other changes to the program or ways to supplement support, but it's not a closure, would those additional, like the public hearings onsite, would they still happen or would they just not be necessary anymore?
We're not proposing a closure at all. We're doing a realignment of that. So again, those processes are different.
So no matter what the realignment would be, we'd still have that meeting? Sorry.
Thank you, President. I'm sorry if I'm not following protocol here.
No, you're fine.
So a good example of this is the current Lincoln study. So the board initiated the study last time you had a board meeting. We sent out the notice to, or a while ago, we sent out the notice to parents, there's the form out there, conversations are happening, we're collecting data. We will bring a recommendation regarding that program closure to the board in a workshop discussion with no board action. If the subs, if the recommendation in that setting and if the board's discussion is that the program, the study that involves a closure be abandoned, then we would bring a business item to the following business meeting and the board could close that study without a program closure. And then we would, at that point, cancel the public hearing and the other open houses that would have followed had the board continued with intent to keep the program closure discussion happening. Eagle Bay will be a little bit different because that will depend on how the recommendation comes. I think the enrollment challenge at Eagle Bay creates some unique things that might get in the way of a no-action decision there.
Okay, so a no-action decision is still possible with the boundary realignment, probably less likely, but it's.
Certainly, absolutely. The board can take any action regarding boundaries that the board wishes to take.
Okay.
It's just like, our recommendation likely would be, we do something about it, whether it's what we've done before or not, would depend on that process.
Thank you.
So just to follow up with that? Because this is a boundary study, not a program study. If when we receive a recommendation, it turns into a program study, would we follow a different procedure?
Yes, we would have to have another, there's a 90-day notice requirement.
If it affects the DLI aspect.
If there's a consideration of a closure or moving of a DLI program.
Then it changes it.
Then we would kick that back in, we would initiate another cycle with a formal board approval to initiate that study, start the 90-day process then. All that has to be done before December 1st. And so likely, that would kick us to the next year for a program change discussion, which is also the board's discretion.
So one more question then. So how come it is a boundary study versus a program study?
Because we're not considering a location change or a closure of a DLI or a gifted and talented program that exists in a magnet program at a school.
Trying to see how we can increase the numbers or?
So it's about the English enrolled students. And because it's the English classes, that means it's a boundary study. It's similar to the thing we're doing at Elementary Number Two, where the students are being moved from one school to another based on the trends in population growth and things like that in the area. It only triggers the special law that has the special notice and public hearing requirements if it involves the program change, not if it involves a non-program change.
Thank you. Any more questions, any more discussion? Okay, we really appreciate you, Dr. Toon and Mr. Forsgren. Appreciate you and appreciate all the work that you have put into this. So, okay, we have a motion by Ms. Price and a second, was it by Ms. Mercer?
It was me.
It was by Ms. Powell, sorry. To initiate a boundary study to address low English enrollment in grades four through six at Eagle Bay Elementary. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you so much. Okay, having come to the end of our agenda, we are finished with this meeting, but it is necessary that we go into a closed meeting for the purpose of negotiations. And so I'll need a motion on that.
Please.
Wait a minute, before we do that, I wanted to ask Maddie and Luke if you had anything to add? Anything at all?
I think it's cool that you asked me, but not really. Thank you, though, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Thank you so much. Maddie, do you have anything to add?
No, same as Luke.
Okay.
I love that you guys ask for our input.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thank you so much for being here, it was great to have you with us. Okay, back to the motion on the closed meeting for negotiations purposes.
I move we go to closed meetings to discuss negotiations.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Is there a?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hogan, motion by Ms. Powell, second by Ms. Hogan, that we go into a closed meeting for the purpose of negotiations. I'll take a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Stevens.
Yes. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you so much, thanks for being here.